I'd like to call the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education meeting to order for September 28th. Attendance, um, attendance, secretary? You're not the treasurer.
Yes, all board members are present with the exception of trustee Kumar.
If we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item number two, special recognition. Two A, the 2023 Board Interns and Students Advisory Council members. Trustee Cullen.
Yep, so as chair, we just kicked off our initial meeting with our board interns and advisory council members, had a great meeting, went through goal setting. We've set up some goals, we're going to go through, board's going to come back, we're going to work with our colleagues here, set up some action plans and set this up for the entire year. So kudos to our board interns advisory council for putting together meeting over the weekend, putting together some great goals, which is definitely going to have a significant impact on our community, you know, both from a community perspective and academically, you know, more to come, you know, regarding those in the future. Now we just want to recognize them, you know, again, just, you know, going back to the spring, it was a very rigorous process. They went through, all of them went through an application process, letters of recommendation, interview process, you know, where they had limited time, you know, to go through and sort of sell themselves. It's a highly selective process, so again, kudos to the people that made it through and to everyone who applied. So we want to recognize our board interns. Sidney Butler, unfortunately, she's out sick today. Nick Getler, who's here, student advisory council, council members. Okay, we can. And then we have our student council advisory members, Andrew Burtman. Unfortunately, Story Huntley is unable to join us today. And Nisha Singh. Colleagues, come up, take a picture.
We're looking forward to working with our student interns and our students on the advisory council, so congratulations. Moving on to item number two B, celebrating success, our national college board national recognition program. Dr. Dan Hartley, our Bloomfield Hills High School principal. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the board, administration, for having us here tonight. I have the honor this evening to stand before you to celebrate and recognize our Bloomfield Hills High School students who've been recognized by the College Board National Recognition Program. So these students have not only had significant academic achievements in the classrooms, but they've also had to perform on the PSAT NMSTQ, which stands for National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, and/or the PSAT 10 and/or their AP tests, or in some cases, all of the above. So students had to have had at least a 3.5 grade point average or higher, have excelled on the exams that I just described, and had a score of three or higher on two or more AP exams. So pretty impressive stuff. And these distinguishments are specifically for students, you know, there's a couple different categories. So there is the National African American Recognition Award, or the NAARA, the National Hispanic Recognition Award, or the NHRA, and the National Indigenous Award, which is the NIA. And without further ado, I'm going to call each student up to receive their certificate and recognition before the board. So first up, we have Christine Baldi with the NHRA award. Next, we have Michelle Barnett, the NAARA award. Next up, Nyla Holloman, the NAARA award. Christine, stay up. Michelle, Christine, stay up here and we'll get a group shot at the end. That was Nyla. Next, we have Chanel Longmire, the NAARA award. Paige Madison, the NAARA award. Kayla Walker, NAARA. And Brooklyn Ramey. Brooklyn, there she is. And we have a few students we want to make sure to recognize, even though they were unable to attend the ceremony this evening, starting with L. Pierre, NAARA. Ava Farah, the NHRA. Lucia Farah, NHRA. And Krista Studier, NHRA. And we did have Carson Barnes, who's no longer a student with our district, but was last year at the time, so the NAARA award for Carson Barnes as well. So congrats to Carson. All right, that's it. Yeah.
I got to get in this time? All right.
Happy to be part of your parents' school, where you come out and give the individual pictures, let me know. Happy to do that, too. Great, I think parents may want some. Does anyone want an individual picture, just of your child at the door? Yeah, okay, so maybe we'll just have the four closest to me stand here, and we'll just do one at a time with the board. Yes, it's just you.
Yeah. These go in the baby books. Okay, and then Christine, would you like to go up? Thank you so much, congratulations. Thank you so much, congratulations.
Congratulations to all of our students and their stellar academic achievements. We're going to move on to item number three, public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for the public to address the Board of Education. It's not a time for dialogue. In the interest of time, the Open Meetings Act provides the board may place time limits and time allotments on an individual comment. In addition to making public comment, you may also email the Board of Education at any time. Any comment that contains profanity, threats, defamatory remarks, or is directed at any person not employed by the district or a member of the Board of Education in their official capacity and related to the role and responsibilities for which they employ or service, or otherwise exempt from the First Amendment protection, and will be excluded from public comment. If you are speaking on behalf of a group, organization, please specify who you represent. Thank you for your time. We will provide you with three minutes for your comments. And trustee Hill, you take your time for us?
Yes.
Thank you. Our first person is Brenton. Hello?
Hi, everyone. I'm Dr. Brenton Balo, representing the PTIA, so your parent teacher group over at International Academy. Couple of quick comments, and that's it. One, thank you for being dunked in the algae tank last weekend. It was beautiful, little on the green side. I felt bad for you guys, but it was nice to see you up there. Two, I'd like to say, hey, we're happy for the sinking fund coming with a vote November on the 7th. We will be rooting for you, being the school that probably needs the sinking fund the most now that we don't have a swimming pool, but we don't care, we'd rather have a couple of classrooms and some quiet rooms in the library, but we're hoping to get at least in that, get that in your minds and your thoughts and your, and our prayers. And then third, Olga's Kitchen has asked the PTIA to help them celebrate the PTIA teachers. So because we scored so high on the U.S. News and World Report rankings, Olga Kitchen would like to come out October 5th, and I'm inviting all of you, as the board members, to come out, and I will get you the time. We just nailed down the date today, but we don't know exactly what time, but they're going to come out and celebrate our teachers. So, and give us a celebration, and probably have a little press time for everybody as we do the celebration on the 5th. So just thought I'd bring that up. So thank you very much, and don't forget about us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day, Brenton. And next, we have Nicole.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me today. My name's Dr. Nicole Marianovich. As a mother, I have a seventh grader who's at North Hills Middle School, and also as a physician, safety, especially for children, is a big deal for me. So I was very excited my son was going to go to the new North Hills Middle School, and then school opened up. And one thing we noticed is that I live close to the corner of Hickory Grove and Loser, and that corner right now does not have a pedestrian crosswalk, it doesn't have a pedestrian light for the students to cross, and there's a large amount of traffic, as people tend to use that as a cut through to get to 75. So watching students cross that corner, and even parents, there were a couple of near-misses. I hope you can appreciate my concern for not just the students also, but for the public at large. This is a dangerous corner. At Loser and Long Lake, there's a crosswalk, but there's nothing there at Hickory Grove. So I do understand that during the hours of school, children are offered busing, which my son does have. However, he does play a sport after school, he plays football. So if we're not around to come drive him home, he has to walk home and cross that intersection. So I tried reaching out, I left, I think, an email with you guys. I tried reaching out to Oakland County Road Commission with my concerns, as well as the school principal. I was told by the road commission Oakland County that they were going to come out and paint. They haven't done that yet. I asked them about school zones signs, because I understand at Way, there's, there's signs, at Conant, there's signs. There's no signs on Loser to let people passing through know that this is now a school zone. I think people are used to it being closed for years, and they just kind of zoom on by. So I was hoping that the board here could give us some kind of guidance on what would be the best way to move forward to make this intersection safe, safer, not just for the children and the parents, but also for the community at large, because I would really hate to see an accident, someone die, be injured, and then action be done. Thank you.
Thank you. No additional public comment? Thank you.
Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yes.
I know we usually don't.
Yeah, I had that for my comments, but I can just.
He has it for us. You want me to just go straight to your superintendent update?
Yeah, sure, yes.
Yeah. So we'll move on to item number four, superintendent's report.
Thank you. And so I'll address that item right away. It's, it's an item that we've heard from multiple people that live in the community in that area. And so we have been working with the township and the road commission, and actually the city of Bloomfield, to set up a meeting collectively to try to see if we can't come up with some solutions specifically for Hickory Grove and Loser there. We're, we share your concern, and, and our hope is to be able to come out of this particular meeting, which is actually next week. And so we, we have the schedule for next week, and so we'll be reporting out after that meeting if we've made some progress as it relates to making some improvements at that particular intersection in ways to provide additional safety measures right there. And so look for that very shortly, and we certainly are going to walk in as willing partners wanting to support both our township and our, and our road commission in any way that we can for them to do that at that intersection. Other items that I have for today, I want to recognize and thank the PTOC for a wonderful event on Saturday, the back to school event. I was there. I know every board member was able to make it, and it was just a wonderful, wonderful celebration of school. The amount of work that goes into preparing an event like that is remarkable, and certainly was worth the price of admission to see John and Tarek and Carolyn in the dunk tank. And, but it was just a wonderful event for everybody, you know, capped off with a great school activity. And so thanks, and we see that we have them here tonight for another agenda item, but thanks to our PTOC for the work that they've done in, in continuing to support our students in our, in our school district. I want to provide an update on transportation. That's been a significant issue for us, getting schools started. Every school year starts with transportation issues, and in, in any year, it takes two or three weeks to sort of settle things down and get our bus transportation routes back to what we would call a normal cadence, where the bus drivers know exactly where the stops are, and they know the kids who are at the stop, and the parents who are dropping their kids off, and the routes and the traffic patterns, et cetera, et cetera. Of course, with reorganizing the school district this summer, additional challenges this year, along with the discussion that we've had around additional challenges with us with finding bus drivers. And so things are beginning to settle down in many cases in regards to getting the buses there on time. We still have a couple of buses where we're struggling, and part of that has to do with continuing to hire new drivers even as the school year starts. And so they, again, have to get used to the routes and used to the students at the route. But those things are being worked out. The biggest issue, of course, was our shortage, and last week, we actually had to cancel bus routes in our, in our school district. And if you remember, over the summer, we actually were thinking about not being able to provide transportation at all in the walk zones, and we were very happy that by the time we got to the start of school, we were able to restore all of the transportation service that we've been used to here in Bloomfield, and, and are very proud to be able to offer our community. And so we were able to, to meet that goal of providing all those services and adding back those routes in the walk zones, but it still left us really at a point where it was very tight, and we had one driver who got ill over the weekend, and we did have to cancel routes last week. The silver lining, at least in the short term, is that by Friday, we were able to get all of the routes back in place, and this school, this school week, we've had all of the routes in place with no cancellations. And what we'll be doing is at the end of every week now, we'll be checking for the following week. And just as an update, we're still hiring bus drivers even as we speak. In fact, working with our mechanics to get them with their CDL license. And so doing everything that we can to find the appropriate staff that have the right credentials. If you've ever been through or heard about the process, it's quite a challenge to become a bus driver. It really is, a lot of training and work. It takes literally at least a month to get the CDL license, the training, pass the classes. And before you can ever get on a bus route, you actually have to drive with a driver before you can ever have a route by yourself. So it's quite a process to get bus drivers onboarded, but we're continuing to work on that on a daily basis, and we're in a better position this week than we were last week. As it relates to the construction work, again, we have updated on our website the construction progress report, which is pretty much the same as it was last week. Right now, we're down to pretty much doing the punch list items, as we call them, which are the miscellaneous items that didn't get completed with the final construction before the opening of school. In addition to that, we have a variety of final pieces of technology, which couldn't go until the very end, that we're still getting up and running. And so we're getting there, and we're, we're getting pretty close to, to being, we feel like, pretty much in a place where there'll always be a handful of items, but having the vast majority of the work done for this past summer construction program, which was a significant undertaking. And believe it or not, and we'll hear about this a little bit tonight, but believe it or not, we are now planning for 2024. And so we're really knee deep now into the planning for next summer, the projects that will take place, and the work that we'll be doing. And it's been an excellent process for us to work with the board oversight committee and the members of the board oversight committee who have helped us sort of stay on track and, and help us get the kind of feedback that the Board of Education needs to help this process be as smooth as possible moving ahead. Next, we just highlight how exciting, how exciting it was to welcome the community to our ribbon cutting events, talking about the new construction at both north and south middle schools. And it was just so exciting to celebrate those remarkable facilities. We should be so, so proud of the programs and facilities we have in those schools for our, for our students. Core schools are remarkably busy right now greeting parents with their annual curriculum nights, and so that occurred last week at all of our schools, the curriculum nights, and so the schools were bustling in the evenings, updating parents on what's going on in the classrooms with all of our students. And really with this great configuration change, which, again, I just can't, coming from the outside and watching this and, and getting involved in it, was a remarkable undertaking. And I'm convinced the Board of Education and the school district made the right decision in regards to the timing of doing the reconfiguration and the work around that, but it was a lot, a lot, lot of work. And so just hats off to everybody for their tireless work to have this done, and thanks to the community for its ongoing patience as we've been finalizing the work in those schools. It's, it's going to be just a remarkable, remarkable program and setting for our students moving forward. So with that, Madam President, I am done with my comments.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and thank you for addressing the comments that we had earlier. We appreciate that. So moving on to item number five, the superintendent search update and board president report. So we are a strong committee of some phenomenal trustees, myself, Megan, and trustee Kumar, who's not here today. I mean, we, we have been working diligently in looking for superintendent through a targeted search. We would like to continue our targeted search, but in the interim, we would also like to make sure we have sustainable processes in place right now to maintain the excellence that we are currently experiencing with Dr. Leepa. And so with that, I would like to turn it over to our interim search committee for an update. Trustee Noble.
Thanks, trustee Southward, appreciate it. And I first want to take a moment just to say thank you to trustee Hill and trustee Cullen for the work they've done behind the scenes during this, these last few months. They've done countless hours of calling and emailing, and I just want to put that out there that I appreciate their, their efforts. And, well, because the permanent superintendent candidate has not been found, we are recommending to the entire board the extension of Dr. Leepa's interim superintendent contract through December 31st, 2023. Dr. Leepa has integrated into our Bloomfield Hills community and school system seamlessly, and we really appreciate all that he has done for us. This has been a big change during this time, and he's worked diligently to see it through. And you make it look seamless and easy. I'm sure it's not, though.
We're very fortunate.
Yes. Because we know, Dr. Leepa, your time is on loan, and because we have not chosen a candidate so far for a permanent superintendent, the committee is recommending that the board also appoint Keith McDonald to the position of interim superintendent, starting January 1st, 2024. Mr. McDonald brings years of experience in public schools, first starting as a teacher in Livonia Public Schools, and then he worked his way up to assistant principal, principal, and then director of human resources for Livonia Public Schools as well. Starting in 2021, he worked for Bloomfield Hills Schools as assistant superintendent of human resources and Title IX coordinator. And from my understanding, Dr. Leepa has agreed to be a mentor to him, starting January as well, and we really appreciate that. So that is all I have to report.
Any discussion?
Based on the recommendation of the interim superintendent search committee, I'm making a motion to make a modification to the agenda to add two resolution proposals, and any discussion regarding same.
Second.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any conversation?
My two motions are as follows. I move the Board of Education to adopt the following resolutions as presented. I move the Board of Education to amend the interim superintendent employment agreement between Dr. Randy Leepa and the Bloomfield Hills School District to extend the contract from the original end date of October 30th, 2023, to December 31st, 2023. The second would be that the board hereby appoint Keith McDonald as interim superintendent of the district effective January 1st, 2024, until such time that a new superintendent is hired and begins employment pursuant to the general terms and conditions set forth in the presented draft employment agreement. Be it further resolved that the board hereby authorizes the board president to negotiate any needed and/or appropriate language changes in the draft employment contract, as may be recommended by the district's legal counsel, whereafter the board president and board secretary may execute such final employment agreement on behalf of the district.
We have our motion, and it's been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Six zero. Thank you.
Where are we adding it, to the agenda?
We just added it to five, because we just voted. We just voted on it, and it was a motion, so.
All right, so we're going to do a motion now?
She already did the motion.
I did the motion, to add it to the agenda.
No, it's now added to the agenda, now we have to do the motions itself. Now it's added to the agenda.
She read the motion.
Okay.
To add it to the agenda for five, and we just voted on the motion, and it passed six zero.
I think we're set.
Okay.
All right, great. I want to also thank Karen and Rebecca for all of your support and continuing to update us in the website and our communication that is forthcoming, so we appreciate all that you do. Moving on to item number six, which is the sinking fund millage. We have Dr. Leepa.
Yes, and we are actually kicking off today our official campaign to provide information to the community about the sinking fund proposal, which is on the ballot for Tuesday, November 7th. Appreciate, oh, part of my work was already done by Brenton, who came up and eloquently spoke about the importance of this sinking fund to our school system, which will generate about $3.4 million per year. This is not a new millage. This is something that has been placed in the school district since 2005. It's been renewed two more times since then, and has provided us the opportunity to do a significant amount of work in our sinking fund, above and beyond the work that we've done with the bond issue, which was really focused on the reconfiguration of the, of the school system. And so certainly, the board studied this at length last year, spent over a year, and had multiple reports in regards to the facility needs moving forward, even with the bond issue work done, and it was the recommendation to put this renewal back on the, back on the ballot. And so we'll have information on our website, we'll be sending information out through our communications starting today, and we're going to be doing a variety of things over the next five weeks, because it's going to be very, very important for us to make sure that the community understands exactly what this proposal is and why the board has decided to put it back on the, back on the ballot. And so with that, we're going to debut tonight the video that we've prepared, one of the variety of communication components that we've put together with the sinking fund. Again, our kickoff being today, this is going to be an opportunity for us to lay out the specifics of the sinking fund and start to inform voters why this is on the ballot. So Karen's going to go ahead and load that baby up, and we're going to watch it. Hello, my name is Randy Leepa, and I'm the superintendent of Bloomfield Hills Schools. Since joining this school system, I have been so impressed with the community's support and the wonderful opportunities provided here to students in Bloomfield. We have a lot to be proud of. I want to take this opportunity to provide you with information about a ballot proposal that residents will have the ability to vote on Tuesday, November 7th. The district has benefited from the support of the community for an ongoing source of revenue specifically used for repair and renovation for our facilities, which is known as the sinking fund. The proposal is for a property tax millage, originally passed in 2005 at 1.5 mills, and renewed by voters on two different occasions, once in 2014 at .74 mills, and once in 2018 at .71 mills. So this is not a new millage. So this is not a new millage, but rather a renewal of an existing property tax that expires this year. The millage is for a sinking fund, a special millage that generates funding that can only be used for renovation and repair of school properties. The sinking fund is different and separate from the 2020 bond issue. This was passed to make major updates to our K-12 classrooms, along with supporting changes to our grade configurations and our building configurations. The purpose of this sinking fund is to allow the district to continue ongoing renovations and keep our schools functional. The sinking fund is used by many school districts, so they can specifically focus their operating budgets on providing educational programs for students and not facilities. Before putting this renewal on the ballot, the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education spent the entire 2022-23 school year studying the need for an ongoing sinking fund. It was clear that school facilities would still need added repair and renovation into the future. The request is for three years, at which time the Board of Education will again reassess the district's facility needs. The renewal would generate about $3.4 million annually to be invested in our infrastructure. How much does this cost a taxpayer? For example, a homeowner whose house is worth $300,000, who would currently be paying $125 a year with this particular millage, would continue to pay this amount if the millage is renewed. The total millage for our sinking fund and for our bonded debt for facilities improvements is 3.5 mils, and this is lower than the county average of six mils. This past millage renewal funded projects such as safety and security improvements, roofing repairs, site work like drain grading and parking lot improvements, emergency repairs such as boiler replacement, water main breaks, and site erosion issues, the replacement of sun exterior doors, and also updating playground equipment. Future projects could include items such as additional parking lot improvements, more security for our schools, added infrastructure improvements like replacement of doors and roof repairs, property improvements such as fixing site erosion and making improvements around wetlands. So I want to summarize. Here's the important information I want our school community to know. This sinking fund is on the ballot for Tuesday, November 7, 2023. It would be no increase. It is a renewal of .6976 mils, and it will allow the school system to continue to make needed repairs and renovations to school sites without taking resources out of the instructional programs and classrooms. So please vote on November 7, 2023. We got that ready for sweeps week. I told Vicki that she did a heck of a job. I was hoping to look a little bit more like Tom Cruise. That was what I was shooting for.
I thought it was Tom.
Thank you.
Did you get it?
Thank you, Madam President. I mean, really, this is what she had to work with.
Is it on halftime tonight of the line game or no?
Well, we tried. I wouldn't doubt Karen wouldn't be able to get it on.
That's awesome.
But this is the kickoff for the event. We're going to have that available on our website. We'll be showing it at a variety of events. We'll be having community events for people to come in, ask questions, learn about the millage, and be doing a lot of outreach, so people know what the ballot proposal is.
Do we know when the absentee ballots get released?
Yes. They actually are starting to be released right now, and so one of the things that we're doing is sending informational pieces out to people that have asked for an absentee ballot.
So this is what's going out?
Yeah. Let me see if that's the one. Yes, I think that is the, I think that's, that's the one. Yes.
Got it.
Yes.
Do we have a separate website, or like a section of the website for this, or how does that work?
Under our About Us, there's a sinking fund 2023.
Okay.
And it will be on the homepage, and you said you know today about that.
I saw that, yeah. Okay.
So under the About Us section on our website is where you'll be able to find additional information. Thank you for that, Karen.
Yes. That is the update on the sinking fund. Every board meeting from here until November 7, we will be providing some type of update. Again, we just want to make sure that we don't want anybody on November 1 saying, oh my gosh, I didn't hear about the millage proposal that is up. And so we're going to do everything that we can to make sure people are informed and understand why the board has put this on the ballot.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Leepa. Moving on to item number seven, our consent agenda. Secretary Van Gamarit.
Okay. I move the Board of Education approve the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as follows. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of August 24, 2023. Approval of the minutes from the study session of September 14, 2023. I move that the Board of Education approve the disbursement reports as presented by Carmella Lewis, accounting and grant supervisor. I move that the Board of Education, I move the Board of Education to amend the following millage rates. General operating of 5.1338 mils, commonly referred to as hold harmless for principal residence exemption, and 9.0 mils for non-principal residence property. Non-principal residence property operating 18.0 mils. Sinking fund millage rate of 0.6976 mils on all property. Debt service millage rate of 2.75 mils on all property. The millage rates are required to be forwarded to respective taxing units by September 30, 2023. And lastly, I move the Board of Education approve the personnel actions as presented by Keith McDonald, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six zero. Moving on to item number eight, special reports. We have Alan Dresselhaus from Platte Maran Cressa. As well as, sorry, Suzanne Carlson from French and Associates.
Yep, that's correct.
Saw two people walk up.
Karen, can you get me going here? Oh, never mind, I got it.
Control out?
Yep, I got it.
Sorry. My apologies.
Control out. There you go. Good evening, Board. Exciting to see you again. Congratulations to Keith and to Randy. Happy to hear of your appointments. And Keith, you know, you've been very instrumental in helping us get things over the finish line over the last month, same with Randy, so very much appreciated. Just to put things in perspective, we had a huge summer, as you know. We were putting roughly between $8 and $11 million of new construction in place over the last three to four months, and it was a monster undertaking, and just congratulations to the whole team that helped push that over the finish line for us. But with that said, you know, we're turning the page now and focusing our efforts on what's going to take place here in 2024. Obviously, we're looking at the elementary schools, putting together, working with the subcommittee, working on what the scope of work will be there. But some things have already started. For instance, at the high school, we've got the new turf fields that are going into place. I'll show you a few pictures about that. And more importantly, we're here this evening to talk a little bit about the Wellness Center and concessions and some other things that are going to be taking place up there. So what we've put together in front of you today is kind of an aerial site plan of what our intentions are, where these buildings would be positioned, and some of the details in which we'll be undertaking. Right now, the schedule is laid out in such that we, based with your approval this evening, we're going to continue down the construction documentation side of things. We'd be going out to bid here in early November, and construction on the new Wellness Center and things would be beginning, probably mobilizing on site around June, with construction beginning in July. We'll be anywhere between a 10- to 12, maybe 14-month project, depending on any obstacles that we get into. We are really looking at this as a two-phase. The first phase being the new proposed Wellness Center, with some upgraded restrooms, concession stands, and team rooms that are shown on the south side of the property there, next to the existing high school. And then the other focus is going to be looking at a new entrance, maybe some team rooms and bathrooms up near the main entrance. As you know, the impact, when you pull onto the site, can greatly be enhanced with some arches, or just showing, calling out the athletic fields and facilities a little bit more, so we're going to be focused on looking to do that.
May I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
I think it's funny. What's called Baron Stadium?
You know, that's...
And please, please say it's not what I'm thinking.
When you pull up Google, that is what comes up.
It was the Handover Baron.
No, no, but I don't think it was ever called Baron Stadium.
Yeah.
It's what it says on there.
On Google Maps, that's what it says, yeah.
It says it.
Trust me, Paul. We shook our head a little bit, too.
I'll put it in the call to Google tomorrow.
Any other questions before I proceed? So at this time, I'm going to turn this over to Suzanne, and she's going to walk you through the new Wellness Center and what, you know, it's going to consist of.
Thanks for having me here tonight. I don't think I've been in front of this board talking about any of the construction projects, so we've done a lot of work already, and I hope, I hear it's been well received, and I'm pretty happy to be here to talk about this one. So this is the Wellness Center, and it is, in addition to the high school, about 7,500 square foot footprint on the northwest corner of the building. It's a two-story addition, acts at the main level is the weight room level. We've got a big floor plan with, you can see the weight equipment, which we'll be working on, but there's some cardio equipment, weight equipment, a strip of turf, some little cubbies for kids to put their bags in while they're working out, and some storage rooms for equipment. The windows overlook the field. You can see the view right from the entrance in the Wellness, right out to the football stadium, which I think is fantastic. The, it's hard to tell in this rendering, but the angle, the box, the curtain wall glass in the front sort of mimics or matches the angle of the football field. So standing there, you'll be able to see down the end to both end zones from within the weight room, which we think is kind of cool.
I'm selling VIPs, hitting.
As I said, this is artistic rendering. We've been making some tweaks since we did the rendering. We're putting team rooms on the lower level, which will be accessed from the plaza level, where you can see some people standing out underneath those columns. So those will be team rooms with, two team rooms, toilet room each, really accessible to the football players, soccer players, anything on the field, track, baseball, it's relatively close to there. So pretty excited about that development that came pretty recently. The materials for the addition, we've got a brick match that is spot on for the high school, that lovely shimmering purply brick that I just, I think it's fantastic. So we've got a brick match for that. At the lower level, we've got some burnished CMU, which is a block, kind of has a buff color, looks kind of concrete-ish, but a little dressed up like that. It's got a little bit of a polish to it. Again, the curtain wall, which has a green tinted glass, all going along with the existing building materials. The main level will be accessed, I think it's J Hall, J unit, I'm not sure which hall that is that it's accessed to, but the level that the auxiliary gym mezzanine is on, there's some classrooms along there as well. So it'll be accessed at the upper level from there. You can see in the upper left-hand corner, as the grade drops down pretty significantly, you'll be able to access the Wellness Center from the baseball field grade level. And then we have an exterior stair just for egress that dumps out onto the plaza level. We're working on weight room equipment. Certainly, it'll be more populated than what you see there, but we wanted to kind of keep it clean, so you could see the view out to the field. One thing we have as an alternate in the bid documents is a light fixture that has some special required, or cleaning features to it. So that'll help do some bio-cleaning when no one's in this space at all, do, kill some germs and bacteria, just by the nature of the fixture. So that's been pretty successful where we've done those other places. We'll have a rubber floor, pretty typical for a weight room. You can see the purple turf. We're still kind of playing around with how much turf is in that space and the location of the turf in there. But we've been working with the athletic department, and I think they're pretty excited about what we've all put together here.
Yeah, the two-story curtain wall overlooking the football field is going to be spectacular view for the students in there working out and things. Any questions before we move kind of the next phase of what we'll be looking at here at the high school?
You said the lower level, there's restrooms. Are there showers, too, or?
No, it's two stalls.
Okay.
And just for team room occupants. I mean...
So they can go back, anyone working out there, they can go back to the regular existing facility locker rooms?
Yes.
And what's going to happen to the old weight room, once this replaces it?
There's been some talk with the athletic director about making that expanded training room. I don't think it's specifically been targeted for anything at this point.
Okay.
It's not extensive.
And that's why we needed this, right?
I heard some things about, you know, possibly a room for the wrestling team to utilize, things like that. It's going to be redeployed back into the district for some sort of athletic improvement there, so.
This is really cool.
It's exciting.
The team rooms are for both teams, right?
That's correct.
They're sort of gendered out through, so the toilet stalls are, you know, they're toilets.
No, I meant like home and away type.
Yeah, the home and away, yeah, basically.
Yeah, and possibly to accommodate umpires and referees and things like that, too, you know, times of needing to change or something like that before the event.
So, and maybe you answered this question. So the training room, that's where unfortunately, a lot of our athletes spend time. Is that, so it's going to stay where it is, or it's going to be part of this, the new training facility? Like, so for, obviously, for that, you know, that aspect?
All the weight equipment will be, this will be the weight, the main weight room.
For the trainers? Are the trainers going to be part of, are they going to have their own room to work with the athletes, like they have their own little room?
Yeah, there's not a separate training room within.
No, it's all one.
It's all, it's a big open space.
Yeah. If you're familiar with like 2SP or some of these other athletes' action, some of these other training facilities here in metropolitan Detroit, where they have these big, open environments, and the trainers take the students in, or the trainees, and they work them out in either small groups or one-on-one sessions. That would all take place in this area right here. Okay. So very exciting stuff. Again, we're pushing forward on the design, and we will be mobilizing on site at the high school in, you know, late May, early June with our cranes, and then we're off and running. The next phase to this is Keith and I and Dr. Leepa have been talking about how do we create more of an impactful entrance from the parking lot into the athletic facility? And so we have a few examples, and perhaps Suzanne, you could talk a little further about that.
Yeah, so right now, the entrance to the field is basically the gate, I mean, when you drive down, there's just the gate that you come in. And so just a simple banner types, you know, permanent banner type structure, I think will peel the ticket booth away from it, so the banner will be just that, a banner with some gates to keep control access into that space. The ramp and stair that goes now down to the field, that'll be, remain in place. There's a lot of nice construction there. We want to keep that in place as we move towards looking to adding a toilet room, ticket booth, structure somewhat in the same location where the ticket booth is now. A little expanded.
And we will come back to the board, obviously, once we have some conceptual sketches and things done on this, so we'll come back to you with a presentation and a few ideas on this. But as you know, the way we get tickets and things has changed dramatically. You're not actually buying tickets anymore at the facility. You're buying them online, pretty much to, you know, for these events. So these ticket booths don't need to be quite the same size that perhaps they were in the past. And so, you know, even though it'll be a focal, it'll be a small focal of the whole entrance into the park, so.
Is that the same place for concessions, or different?
So part of our design process right now is expanding the current concessions. We're on site today, doing a little looking around. We think we can make that a little bit bigger, a little bit better, service the spectators a little bit better. So that'll be part of the Phase One work that we just talked about as the addition to the Wellness Edition.
Yeah. Terrick, also... Yeah, Terrick, also, might be an opportunity to create more of a, like, an outdoor seating area around that concession area, as well as they do a lot of grilling and.
Yeah.
And things out there. So how can we incorporate that into some sort of a patio area design as well?
It's heavily congested.
Yeah.
Is the thing that like, when I, whenever I'm there, I notice it's not just that there's a lot of people, but like, to get around it is crazy. So more area, even it's just area to move, is probably good.
Yeah.
Especially because we don't, like you said, we don't need as much for tickets and things, it's just.
Yeah.
Places for people to get through, to use the restrooms or whatever it is.
Sure. And we haven't ruled out either the potential to maybe try and get a smaller concession or something over near the entrance, because I know, understand. It's a long ways to walk, obviously, to from the the home bleachers to go to the concession stand. But, you know, those are things we're still working out and exploring. But the main concession stand is going to remain where it is, and we're going to improve the operational flow of it and try to expand out in front there, where maybe creating a little seating or having a better outdoor grilling area.
Okay.
So.
Does any of this include making any renovations to the sound room where the folks who are videotaping and.
Oh, up in the.
Because the speaker system is definitely.
Press box?
Yeah, the press box.
Not at this time.
Speaker system.
I don't believe that is included.
Is there?
Oh, my goodness, it's not.
They spent, I know, two years ago, they installed a new speaker system. So whether it's not functioning, operating, but I mean, I know they, I know two years ago, a couple of years ago, they instituted, you know, it was a new speaker system. So it should be state-of-the-art. Now, whether or not it's it sounds state-of-the-art, I mean, I don't know.
It's not quite like U of M's with the flashing lights and, you know, the big.
Oh, yeah, the at night, the purple, you know, purple and purple and black, you know, for night games. But but we but we have, I know they spent, you know, some, a couple of years ago to, for a new speaker system.
Yeah, okay. Whoops. Might want to. So with that, just kind of, I have a couple of images here of your new baseball and softball field. The turf is in place. They're really moving diligently to have this wrapped up probably this fall. So the original schedule is to have this ready to go by the spring, March. Happy to report this will probably be completed here in October. And it's very impactful, I guess, for fields that have never had turf before. This is really state-of-the-art. We've accommodated some walkways for spectators and family members to get up to the baseball field with the walk behind the bleachers there and creating some new stairs, as well as we're we're cleaning up. I don't know if I have a good picture, but there's some some growth in trees that are right to the, I guess it'd be the west there of the the visitor benches. We're going to take all that out, regrade all that area and clean that up to make that a little look a little nicer as it, the fields all kind of blend together. There is some talk, and we're still working on it, that we would install a new flagpole up in that area so that all the athletic fields would be able to utilize one new flagpole. Right now, you have four or five flagpoles. You know, you've got one for softball, you've got one for baseball, you've got one for football, and they're all very small in nature. And so our thoughts are is, hey, if we take all these down, let's put one big, you know, not saying like the size of a car dealership one, but one big predominant one right up on the top of the hill there where that those trees are and and could be visible from all the fields. So that's something else we're exploring at this time. I did want to point this out as our our last slide here tonight, that we do have some challenges that we're working through with the softball field. You can see behind home plate there where the existing bleachers are. That the grade there has never been very conducive to getting spectators and fans, as well as it's just really not safe to get spectators up there to sit, to watch the game. So with the help of our board subcommittee and Randy and Keith, we've decided that we are going to take those those bleachers down, and we are going to duplicate, there's currently bleachers on the down the third base path for the visitor stands. We're going to duplicate that effort on the first base path next to the the dugout there. And then we're going to remove those bleachers from behind home plate. We are going to install a retaining wall that's going to butt up to that service drive that comes down there because of the grade is washing out, and we're about to put new pavement in. And the last thing we want to do is to have that wash out and all that pavement we just put in collapse, and we'll be repairing it again in 12 months. So so those things are in the works right now as well. I just wanted to bring it to your attention that we're going to be changing that out. So we're going to drop that grade down by about six feet, kind of regrade that out. It'll still be looking like a hill. We'll put grass on it, and it'll create an area for, you know, families or spectators to sit on a blanket, similar to like what you would see like up at Pine Knob, you know, when you're at the movie or at the music theater up there, where you could sit and watch the game on on the side of the hill. We have a few other renderings that we are considering maybe tiering that, but at this this point, I don't believe it's in the budget right now. So I just want to bring that to your attention. We are addressing that, and some of this will have to come out of construction contingency as it's not allocated right now. This is kind of something we've stumbled upon as we got into doing the turf work. So safety first for our our fans, right?
I just had a question about the picture and.
Is there enough seating there for families to watch? It doesn't look like a lot of seating, but.
Yes. See if I can zoom in on this anymore. So you can see this set of bleachers right here. This would be duplicated on the other side over by the first base path.
Oh, okay.
And then again, you know, a lot of, a lot of families say they actually don't like sitting in the bleachers, they'll bring their own chairs, and so they sit along the sidewalk here.
Oh, nice.
And our intentions are, we're going to continue the sidewalk behind home plate. So you're going to have four or five feet that you could sit on a hard surface with a chair or something if you wanted to. So I think there'll be ample seating available.
To answer your question, it's it's fine. It's enough. It's enough, you know? It's 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 a different event. It's not like a, you know, a homecoming football game. I mean, so there's enough seating there.
I got you.
And especially with if the vision, what you're saying is that they have grass, and people will come and they'll have a space, people will bring their chairs and sit. So that'll actually be very nice, because that is, and I've seen some parents fall, like, come down that hill and fall there. So it is dangerous, so thank you very much for addressing that.
Yep. So that's the excitement we have coming up in 2024. Obviously, probably in another month or two, we'll be back to present our activities at the elementary schools and some of the other initiatives we're going to undertake. But the biggest one, obviously, is going to be at the high school with the new Wellness Center and and things we're doing up there. So thanks again for your time, and any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Two years, like, three years ago.
Next time you go to the game, I want you to listen.
Okay, moving on to item number nine, Board Business.
We were going to present at both A and B, they're different resolutions, but present them together so the board knows exactly what those particular Board Business items are. And these are actually items that were brought to the Board of Education last year, and the board had looked at an overall recreational master plan and looked at approving that along with potentially applying for a grant where the state was actually going to provide us through its funding, a chunk of money. We did have to put up some money into that, but it wasn't going to be the District General Fund, it was going to be funds that were already, already have been raised over at the Nature Center. And so really, the the items today are to approve the overall recreation master plan and then some adjustments to the resolutions that were, by and large, just a technical requirement by the MDNR, who wanted us to put this in language, resolution language, as opposed to the language that we're sort of used to approving. And so we do have two great presenters here tonight. We have Alan listed, of course, on the agenda, but I'm more excited to have Aaron and Paulina here to answer any potential questions.
All right.
And why don't you guys come up and talk a little bit about the.
So before we do that, before we do that, we do the motion.
So I moved, I moved the Board of Education to amend the March 23, 2023 resolution, which adopted the Bloomfield Hills Schools Recreation Master Plan as presented, to incorporate the language required by the Department of Natural Resources in the attached resolutions as presented.
There is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Are there, is there any discussion?
So if we can have Keith and and our two presenters come up just to provide a little bit of background for the board, and then we'll go ahead and entertain a vote.
You took our presentation, you described everything. If you do have questions, we'd be happy to to answer any of the questions that were not covered by Dr. Leep.
Is there any other discussion?
No.
Call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm.
Any abstentions? It's been properly, I mean, it's been six-zero, all of the favor. Thank you.
So I wait.
We have number two.
Number two, I move the Board of Education authorize Bloomfield Hills Schools to apply for the Department of Natural Resources land trust fund grant by approving the attached resolutions as presented.
Is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Read the packet. Call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any no's? Any abstentions? Six-zero, thank you.
Thank you.
For your good work.
Thanks, thanks for showing up.
We appreciate your your attendance and participation, most definitely. Moving on to item number nine, C. Request to, oh, is there a motion?
I move the Board of Education approve a change order to Global Green Services and ARC Environmental Group in the amount of $86,000 for a total of $162,615 to be funded as a 2020 bond as presented.
There is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
I do continue to marvel at the amount of asbestos in the world.
We are getting in a much better place, especially in Bloomfield, with the amount of asbestos we're taking out with all this construction. So we are moving into a better spot here. So I can't say we're asbestos-free, but with all the work we're, we are going to start over at the old Eastover, that's going to be more asbestos coming out, and we are making a big footprint around here.
Thanks, Jacob.
Thank you.
And we did put some of the asbestos in the dunk tank this past Saturday. I don't know if you guys noticed that or not, but it was.
Is that why I was green?
Well, just just for the board members.
It did seem like it.
Just from the board members.
It was just lead paint in the booth.
Any terms of superhero want to be your marketing agent?
Only only the board members.
Only be your lawyer.
Yeah, that too.
Well, now it's on the record, so. All right.
You get your claim.
Yeah. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Six-zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Nine D, is there a motion?
All right.
I move the Board of Education to award the purchase of device charging carts from the R E M C Cooperative Bid Consortium, R E M C number 230010, in the amount of $114,876.19 to be paid for from the bond fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I can just, I just want to recognize David before he speaks to the item for the work this summer. You know, the tech people were the ones who were able to get in the buildings last with all this remarkable construction, and the hours that they've put in the last two months have been remarkable, and David's led a remarkable portfolio of work. So David, thank you.
Thank you.
On my behalf, and and let you speak to the item.
Well, it's good to see all of you aren't green after the dunk tank, just for the record. So anybody who has not seen that dunk tank.
Just the ones who.
It was questionable, so. This, as you know, this is the charging carts, as I said before, not all that sexy. These are charging carts on wheels that will be able to move around in the elementary classrooms. It'll give them a lot more flexibility than they currently have. We know that tabletop space or our millwork space, those are premium spots, and when you have to put devices and stuff on there, it takes away from those other other spots or other things that they would put on there. This will put it all in one place, very manageable, and we can move it in and out, and teachers can move it in and out very easily.
Awesome, thank you. That's exciting.
Yeah, it it actually is. It it will have an actual impact.
Yes, it will.
You know, we don't think about it, but it actually will for particularly for teachers when they're just trying to manage that classroom, particularly for the elementary.
It's huge.
They don't have to ask around, like, where is this one? Where is, is it on charge?
Is it stacked up? Did we spill something from paint, you know, or glitters on it? It just helps so much tremendously.
I'm sorry if it was on there. How many charging carts will 114,000 cover?
Goodness, I knew someone was going to.
I was going to be the one asking.
Yeah, so, thanks, Carolyn. I I don't recall, so if you, but let me put it this way, it's every elementary classroom.
Okay.
So that's whatever that comes out to. I want to say 62, but don't quote me.
Which is, which is definitely going to help support in making sure the technology our children are having access to can maintain its charge, because it's very important for them to be able to not just figure out how to plug it into a wall if they leave their chargers at home. And so I actually think charging stations are very efficient.
It is, and you think about it, too, when we, let's look at the lower grades as well. And it's always important, we think of it as just, hey, you're pulling out devices and that, but when teachers are managing their classroom, they're teaching their students those routines. And so they may have, hey, I've got a ID, and then I take my ID, and this is the process, and then I grab my device, and then I go to my group. Those are all very important routines for little ones to grow, and so those things actually provide for those opportunities better than they have in the past.
Any other discussion?
No.
Call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Six-zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Nine E, is there a motion?
I move the Board of Education pursuant to Board Policy 3001, 3001, to change the name of Bloomfield Hills High School course offering from Women's Studies to Women's Studies and Literature as presented.
Is there a second?
Second. Sarah was going to be shy for a second, she wasn't coming right up, but here she comes.
I didn't know.
I got to say something nice about her because I said something nice about David. So Sarah, you're doing a great job. There you go. I didn't say anything about Jacob, did you make, you know, Jacob did any?
No one else volunteered.
This is recorded, Randy. Just keep that in mind.
This is definitely recorded, including your sashay.
Yeah, well, I give up. It's late, we're good. All right. Just real quick, it's not a new course, it's the same course we've had, but we wanted to recognize that when students apply to college, it said Women's Studies on there and not Lit or not Composition or not something else. And so looking at a quick overview of a transcript, even though they know they're required to take four English classes, it's not always obvious that that is an English class. Sometimes Women's Studies might seem like it's a humanities-based course. This just clarifies what it is, and that's why we're asking for it. We'll approve it tonight, or if you approve it tonight, we will start studying that to transcripts beginning tomorrow.
And this is transcripted for not students who've already, like, graduated?
Correct. This is for those, basically, it's a college app thing, even though in a college, on a Common App, not every single college in the world takes a Common App, you can list what your classes are, and they kind of match those up. This just makes it easier on both ends.
I was just wondering, like, for instance, if a student took a gap year or decided to enlist, and they didn't go straight into college?
To be honest, we don't usually go retroactively back and change that, but we can always have a counselor letter that attaches to it. Again, in the Common App, you can say my Women's Studies was my English 12 class. It's a senior-level class, which is why it's kind of time-sensitive, because it goes on the transcripts that are being sent out right now for college apps.
Just an important fact for some parents that might have that question.
Yep, always counselors can always add a letter. Yep. Always, counselors can always add a letter. It always makes things easier. Put an asterisk on it and add a letter. Yep.
Thank you.
Should we thank just one parent for bringing this issue up to you, or is it multiple parents that?
It was one parent, but it's, it's actually interesting, in the conversation when the class was on, because the name has been around for a while. A new teacher took it over, and she had talked about possibly changing the name, and that was kind of, we'd already done all our changes in February, March. We're like, we'll revisit it if it comes up, or it came up. So, here we are, being responsive. Yay.
Any other discussion? So, you have no discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? 6-0. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Unless you would like to be the person, right now it is me.
Oh, it's you? No, I was wondering, as.
I was going to nominate you, because that's what I was thinking, that you were going to be the new person.
I was going to nominate Megan, but.
I think.
I'm kidding. All right. So, I move, I move that Michelle Southwood be appointed as Bloomfield Hills Schools Voting Delegate, as the alternate for the Michigan Association of School Boards 2023 Delegate Assembly on Thursday, November 9, 2023, at 7:00 PM, Lansing Center.
Paul, the second name is a different name. Do you want?
Oh, is there a second person?
Michelle has, well, it's an alternate, which I would think that Michelle is tricking me into.
Oh, so.
But it's okay.
It's okay?
You can add my, so, when you read it the next time, just read my name as the second.
Read it again, okay.
Trusty Hill, would you like to be the alternate?
It seems like Jesse Van Gemmer, with his wisdom and experience on the board, would be a great alternate.
Yeah, I, yeah, I agree with that.
Sounds like a kite.
I know. His alternate position is hot.
I'll, I'll do the, I'll do the motion.
Do you want to be the alternate, John?
It's fine.
I move, I move.
I'll be the third string.
Yeah, and I, and I could be after Meg, and I could be after Megan.
Please add that sequence into the.
Six.
I move that Michelle Southwood be appointed as Bloomfield Hills Schools Voting Delegate and Jonathan, Jonathan Van Gemmer as the alternate for the Michigan Association of School Boards 2023 Delegate Assembly on Thursday, November 9, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Lansing Center.
Any?
Second.
That was the fastest second. It was moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Thank you ahead of time.
You're welcome. I'll be in the area, so, I'll just keep going that direction.
It's my discussion.
Right. Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abst, any abstentions?
Nope.
Passes 6-0. Anything else on anyone's heart or mine?
Can I just make a quick comment?
Yes.
We quickly glossed over during our, the, you know, working through the mechanics of our interim extension and appointment, and I just want to thank Dr. Leep and Mr.